Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
It's okay. Well, call me in order. Park my heads. P.
Just doing reassessment. We are now in reserve township, so our person's back from maternity leave. We're back at it. Appeals currently. I have two petitioners with a total of four properties going before Peta Boa Board. That'll be in October after Bridge Festival, 24th. Pretty quiet. Everything's going well.
Okay. Thank you. Jared?
Inmate billing year-to-date, $165,879. Year-to-date reported collection, $61,363.87. And I guess the commissioners asked me to see about getting some funding for the road closures in Bridgeton during Bridge Festival. What I calculated, they wanted, they formed a committee to come up with a plan, and they came up with like four checkpoints that we have to man. So we need to fund four officers, which I honestly just don't know. Looking at it with...
Where are you gonna get these people?
Yeah, well, we have enough specials, you know, SROs that could use, but...
Because school's out, school's out that week, so...
But there's just, we did like a mock schedule and there's just not enough interest in it. To, you know, my original idea was to have maybe two checkpoints, which I could make that happen.
Right.
But with the four checkpoints and then have an officer, one or two officers have to answer complaints and different issues down there, it's gonna be really, really tough. So I hate to say, yeah, we can do it, when maybe we won't be able to. I mean, there's still a couple months out, but I don't, it's gonna be tight on scheduling. And now we have to cover security during, or on the square during that week.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where I'm at with all of this then.
Well, what is, what is, let me ask you this. You've been involved in all this, and my understanding was one of the commissioners was coming, but I don't see them. So, that being said, what is the, what's the driver here? Why do we need to block off and have checkpoints everywhere in Bridgeton? I realize it's busy, so let's dispose with that.
Again, my idea was to just close off a section of Main Street. Let it come across the bridge, go towards Mansfield or whatever. I'm not saying it was the best idea, because I don't, I don't know. It's gonna be a live trial in the air. But they came up with a committee, which I think was a good idea, because they have people that own property in Bridgeton, and some vendors and parking lot people were in on this committee. So I think it was a good, I think that was the best answer, because I don't necessarily know what would work best. I know something needs to be done, but I just, I don't know what exactly.
Is this, I assume...
There's so much congestion down there.
I assume it's just so wall-to-wall people, and then somebody tries to drive through with their vehicle and basically...
Right. We've had a couple minor incidents, some like road rage.
People get out of the way.
One guy was banging on the hood, was driving through, you know, a car that was driving through the neighborhood. Just, we've been fortunate.
If the barricade, if we're gonna do four barricades, I mean, you guys are, there's already some of you down there every day anyway, right?
Yeah, I try to have at least two people down there.
So you've got two officers patrolling, perusing the area, keeping everything somewhat under control. Does it have to be a law enforcement officer to stand at the barricade?
I think that would help. I mean...
I'm not saying it wouldn't help. I'm asking, would it have to be?
No, wouldn't have to be, but to me, one of the toughest parts of the job is dirt and traffic. A lot of people don't want to listen. They get frustrated. I mean, it's one of the, I rank it up there high as one of the toughest parts of the jobs. It's frustrating.
But we have lots of cases in this county where there'll be an accident or something, and you have volunteer firefighters directing traffic.
Correct. And I, when I first started talking about this plan, I thought maybe the fire department would be interested in helping, but I'm not getting much, we're not getting much feedback from that part of it.
Well, you know what it's gonna be. Somebody's gonna be screaming in your face all day.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's not an easy job.
Hey, I'm not saying...
So what happens when somebody pulls up to that barricade and says, oh, I wanna go through, and the officer or whomever's on duty says, no, you can't, then they have to try to turn around, and then what do they do then? Just go...
I guess you reroute them.
You have to try to explain to them how to reroute or...
The first year would definitely be a headache.
That sounds just like a nightmare today.
Right. It'd definitely be a headache for sure.
Well, I can see where you're pointing, just two, one north, one south, and just riding around the side streets would help immensely.
Yeah.
Just close Main Street. I mean, that's, that's surely where most of the congestion is, isn't it?
Yeah, like I said, I was gonna let them come across the bridge and that, because I think they're, I sent you the route. I don't know if you guys got it.
Yeah, we, it's in our, I got there. It's in our package.
I think they're wanting the, like barricade at the bridge, which was a little different than what I thought, but, and maybe it's a better idea. I don't, I don't know, but...
Well, I see. Cross over around that side street over to the, to the east side. I mean, you can get around, if you wanna go through this, make a look around there.
The congestion is as you come over the bridge, which, when you turn left, it's congested as well. But as you come across the bridge, the first two or three blocks there is really congested, because that's where the food court is. It seems to be that most people in that area. But, you know, I could afford to have one guy there, one guy at the end where he's gonna be, and then have one guy available for calls, or two guys.
Right, right.
But...
Well, that sounds a lot more practical to me than...
But, yeah, the committee came up with that. I just, I don't think how the manpower for five, six guys.
How many reserves do you have, Jason?
I think seven, or about up to 10, and then we have seven or eight special deputies.
But don't we have to be careful? I mean, there's, there is a difference between a special deputy and a reserve. We have to be careful about if we pay a reserve, why doesn't that start the clock ticking on them going to the academy or all of that, or how would you do that?
No, you can't, you can't pay reserves. You can't pay the reserve.
Pay the special, yes. I mean, we need to be clear on that. They're two different...
No, I wouldn't have reserves. I would have special.
You have to have the specials. Well, I just wanna be clear that we...
Yeah, right.
Because some people intermix the terms.
Yeah.
Because when I talked to one of the commissioners, why, he kept using reserves, and I'm like, pay the reserves, and of course.
No, we don't pay our reserves. They get a clothing line every year, but that's it. But no matter why, I don't, I don't see having six guys to put down there every day for 10 days. And I haven't really had a chance to speak with commissioners about this. I missed the last meeting due to another appointment, but...
Well, it does sound like to me we need to probably look into it more. I mean, this is August, so we've got a little time. I mean, I don't know that, it was suggested to me, well, we need to let the vendors know, and it's like, I don't know what the vendors have anything really, why they need to be told whether or not one way or another, but...
Just the ones that park people in their lots.
Is that what they mean by tell the vendors?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I assume inside this quarantine area, there's people that sell parking?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully keep all them out. Why then there shouldn't, we shouldn't need any parking?
That's right.
Isn't that right, Mary Ann?
I believe the commissioners meeting, they said everyone that wants to park cars has access to their lot under their plan.
I definitely think it's something... So we're gonna let those cars in there then? So how are we gonna do that? Who's gonna sort out who's going to park and who's not?
Who you talking about?
Okay, now they're telling me that, well, these, these parking lots that are inside the quarantine area, now those people are gonna still wanna be parked there apparently.
I think all the lots were on the outside of the quarantine area, and then just the local...
Just the local.
People that live there were allowed in and out. This block, I have a lot planned there.
Isn't there a lot right there next to the bri, almost to the bridge, to the left and around?
Well, you guys all vendors now.
All vendors.
You got Hawkins on the west side, but so you'd just be allowed to come from, or the east side. So you'd be allowed to come from the east side to park.
Up to there.
Yeah. I think the only parking lot that would have been affected, and I don't, I don't know whose it is, but it's behind the church there in the, kinda central, and in the, along the creek?
Along the creek, so I'm on, I was like...
On the west, on the west, behind the church.
There was a parking lot next to Casey's Barn, behind College Store, Casey's Barn, because that's where I always parked.
Okay. Now, Celia Case, she was a part of the committee, so I thought that'd be a good perspective.
I think the one behind the church was the one that, just when you're gonna park cars this year, but I could be wrong.
Okay, well, I, to me, it sounds like we need to give you more time to talk with them to, because I mean, if they don't have the manpower, why, you know, they're gonna have to revise their plan or come up with some other alternatives, it sounds like to me. I mean, we can't solve that either. It's not, it's not our role to solve that anyway.
Right. Well, I was just asked to bring...
I understand, I understand, I understand.
Well, you were asked because they want money.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm not interested. I'm not committing anything to, at this point, you obviously say you don't think you can do it.
Right.
So there's, I, my seat, I'm not even committing here.
Not gonna, I mean, come back when, or send the commissioners or whomever to come back, and then once you have a plan and you think you can staff, if you can staff it one, then we can, we can take another look. I'm not saying no, but I, there's not really anything for us to do, I don't think, at this point, other than to say, come back with manpower or a plan.
I guess I still wanna give you a heads up.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, no, because I thought one of the commissioners was gonna be here. That's what I was supposed to do.
Yeah, so did I. No, he had, he had a prior engagement, so he asked me to bring him.
Okay. Anything else from your department other than parking?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
I want, thanks.
Thanks.
His, when he, the billing for the inmate housing, he's billed $165,000. We've only received $75,000, and $11,000 of that was from last year. So don't think we've got this much money right now. It's been billed and...
Just takes a while.
Yeah, but they don't seem, they don't, they don't, they don't pay what we bill anymore anyway. They, they pay a lump sum, something. They changed that a couple years ago, did they not?
What was your first...
It was before your time. For DOC, I mean, we just get a lump sum of dollars from them for housing inmates nowadays. I mean, we still send and bill them, but I don't think they pay on bill.
Yeah, they pay ahead of time.
Yeah.
They pay like, Pam says they're paying like three months behind.
Probably. It was always right behind.
Yeah.
It's where they built the books.
Well, they changed, yeah, and they changed that statute a couple years ago to where they kinda come up with, here's what the number is going to be, and that's what you're getting. Well, I'm almost certain of that.
Yeah, they did do something like that. Okay. All right. Julie, hello?
Um, in July, we did 138 runs total. We transported 130 patients from those runs. Right now, we're sitting at $374,740.27 collected for the year. We're about $3,900 ahead of where we were last year at this time. We've had a slow revenue month. Doesn't match what our run totals were. We do have 182 outstanding accounts. That number has increased drastically, totally $104,000. 19 accounts, 19, which is abnormal for us, went to collections for non-payment. Three went to litigation. It's been, we're having billing company this weekend. I'll bring that up in a minute. We finally got Med One in service. She's up and going. Took us a while. We did actually settle with the company, so I think the amount that we budgeted was $35,000 for the remaining total of that ambulance. We're only gonna end up paying $30,070, because they sent us a truck that was not serviceable. The things that were in their contract that were supposed to be done were not done. We ended up having to do a lot of the work ourselves. So as soon as we get the insurance, they had to go between our lawyers, they reached a settlement agreement, and so it'll be $30,000 coming out of, and I can't remember which account it was.
I don't remember both.
Yeah, so there'll be an additional $5,000 in there. So that was finally something that we got done. The roof is done. They had to re-sheet the roof on the left side of our building, on the garage area. The first time that they came in, they put the first six sheets on and realized their crimper was not working correctly, and they went ahead and finished the roof anyway. And then it rained the first time, and they found out that the crimper did not waterproof, because there were gaps in it. So they finally came back. This whole project has been a blast. They came back and got it done, well, they forgot the crimper. So they put a brand-new roof on and had to hand-crip the ends, just to keep everything from flying off in the wind, and they finally came back on Friday and crimped it all, and it looks good, and it passed the inspection. So the roof is done, but then they bent the ridge cap, and now we're waiting on that to come in, because we have a very dented and bent ridge cap. Hopefully, when they put that on, it's supposed to be here next week. They won't tear anything else up. They don't need to be red blooded aside. If they finish the ridge cap, then the building will be done, if they don't tear anything else up. So that'll be our final inspection. I lied. We've got one ceiling inside that they've gotta redo the drywall. It's been fun. Outside of that, the building plan will be finalized. We've already been paid from insurance for the final inspection. We just have to do our final walkthrough after they fix those last two things, and then we'll cut that check, and we're completely done with the building side. Content submission, I just had the second one get approved, and so they should be sending a check for that soon, and so I'll have one more content submission, and then that'll be closed out. So my goal was June 30th. I'm a little past that, but we're close. We're getting close. We have a full-time position open. I had an employee that was off on medical leave and ended up being off long-term, and so he left our agency. That posted the Monday, the 31st of July. As of this morning, I have 14 applications for that position. So six of those are full-time people, or part-time people that work for us, and the other eight are from outside agencies. So it's been, I actually am gonna have to make a very tough decision when we hire, so that's gonna be nice. And I've actually had three of those people follow up a couple times to check on my application. All right, so the billing company, I'm gonna blame Heather and Mary. They're firing us. They're not really, not really firing us, but we basically have had to follow up with them on almost all of our accounts. They're falling through the cracks. Our revenues aren't what they're supposed to be. We're sending a lot more to collections than we ever have before. Some of those are going to litigation. Some of them, they're writing off, and we don't even know about it. So after sending some messages back and forth to check on accounts, I received a message from their president that said, you guys are doing a lot of work that you shouldn't have to do. Why don't you just take your billing back in-house? And she also said, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to do this work for you, and you're a small account for us, so it's not worth our time and effort, basically. So I responded to them that we were under contract, and asked if they were willing to let us go from the contract without penalty. And they, within an hour, sent me a termination agreement and wanted it to be effective the next day. They really wanna get rid of us. So that was through the county attorney. I actually found a new billing company that came highly recommended by a lot of our local agencies that are around us. It's in Madisonville, Kentucky. So as soon as Nick is done verifying that the contracts are good, then we'll sign, we've got approval to sign both contracts, the termination and the renewal of the new company. I'm hoping that it works out. We should be able to end one at midnight one day and start the next one at 12:01, so we don't have a lapse in billing. Now, revenue will slow down for a couple of months while we onboard until they go back and bill those accounts. So we will have a few months of slow revenue probably, but it should be caught up within, by the end of the year. So just kind of a heads up on that. And then, I don't know, all these accounts that went to collections, I'm hoping that we'll get those caught up. They are required to follow up on all the accounts that they currently have, and it's law. So I don't think they're gonna work them real hard. We're probably still gonna have issues with them, but we should hopefully be back to where we were with revenues, or moving ahead like we should have been the whole time. That's all I have. That's plenty.
All right, thank you. No public. Approval of minutes. We have the June, July minutes in your package.
Uh, one change to July. I made, under, Solid Waste Page 3, Solid Waste District, Tom, or Soil and Water, did not meet. I should say Solid Waste did not meet. So if you can make that little change right there, I would motion to approve them, ask them to...
Most been made, second approved of minutes with that change, all in favor. Yeah, we continue to soil and water.
That's all right.
All righty. Additional appropriations?
Yes.
I'll ask the auditor for any color. If you might have. Local roads and streets, do you have any color on that additional?
Yes.
Fine.
Which one?
Local roads and streets. Maybe highway?
I've got a thing from Cheney, this reappropriation for dust control. It's the money they, they've collected for dust control.
So this is to re-appropriate more or less the revenue and from the dust control cost shares. Our $18,786 is for the jail. This is the overrun, some of Stacley's stuff, right?
Yeah, it's an invoice from June 2022 that got lost.
Yeah. It's a change order. It was for the resinor cost increase. The resinors are the, is that the flush valves or something to do with that?
Correct.
I think so too. All right, so that was a, a change order approved by the commissioner to, a bill that never got dealt with last year. Highway generator, this is just basically appropriating a grant. Chris has talked about that grant a few times. It got missed to be appropriated.
And the money, we received the money July 18.
Fine. And then the emergency preparedness. This is what was presented to appropriate that grant for the first six months of the year. A number of us have talked with President Elbord regarding this. This will only appropriate that fund to the end of the grant cycle, which is June 30th. There is no appropriation for that grant at this point, July 1st forward.
There's two checks that you paid to her, but Heather's looked like you're doing a preparation.
And it's all clear that there will be no more of that paid until there's an appropriation, right?
Yes.
All right. For everybody around, we've all discussed this thing, discussed it, discussed it in and out. We've been assured that for this money, we will get something from now on. That's been a real, real thorn up from now. And I had a long talk with Stephanie, and I told her, I said, if we're gonna pay money, we're gonna get something. And she said, you can hold me accountable. I said, I will. So, I think we can, I think we've got a lot better control of these things now, and there's gonna be things, we're gonna see results of this, or it's not gonna be paid.
As of July 31st, we have received $14,000 for this state grant.
Okay, any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the additionals as presented now.
Motion been made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Reappropriation, pay the jury.
Make a motion, pay the jury.
Seconded. Most been made seconded, pay the jury, all in favor.
Aye.
In your package, you have the cash flow statement from the auditor. Monthly reports, redevelopment.
Did not meet.
Courthouse security did not meet. Plan commission.
Did not meet.
Did not meet. Solid waste.
Meet next week.
Meet next week. Okay, new business. Mary Ann handed out your budget books. Budget is next Thursday in this room, Office 17. Scheduled begin at 8:30. We should be able to do it all in one day, as we've done in the last couple of years. You're always been, and Mary Ann have been working on pulling everything together. I don't know if there are any more comments on where you're having the budget, or...
Aside from rerunning four fees for all the non-property tax-bearing funds, and besides having a, estimates for 2024 income tax revenues, pretty well ready. I have applied the levies where I think they should go at this point. We have moved various duplicates around here and there. I'm, I'm pretty well ready to go. I think we've got, got a workable solution at this point, so. About all I really have to say about the point. Like, we gotta see and have numbers, like set up the levies and the rates pretty much spot on now. I would, we, state is required to have the local income tax estimates out 16th, state before. This has all been calculated based on this year at this point, and I think we all can pretty well say that it should be up from 2023, so that's a conservative method, but we should, we should do it, and everything is functioning and balancing at this year, so it'll be all right.
Okay. Mary Ann, anything?
No, I need you to stay because of the...
Oh, yeah, right, please. I forgot about that.
But it's more than counts. Andy's gonna be here for the exit.
I take it, okay. Is it anybody else is welcome to stay if you want, if they're waiting?
I just need one person from the council and one person from the commissioners.
So who's gonna be the commissioner?
Bruce Hartman.
Oh, Bruce is coming.
But I figured the meeting with us longer, and she's not gonna be here till 10 o'clock.
Okay.
She may come early.
That's fine. I mean, I'm funny, you know that Steve. I guess I make a run and err or something, come back or something. Anything else?
Just a, do we have to do anything on the public health opting in and out? Is that just something?
All right, so I, I'll say that, because the, over the last month and a half to two months in this budget process, there've been a tremendous amount of work done to deal with this possibility of opting in or out. And for those of you who don't know what Tom's talking about, the General Assembly passed new legislation, and they, they turned this to Governor's Public Health Commission. That's basically a lot, a big lot of money going out for public health to the counties. It's based upon population, it's a dollar per capita, but it requires you to make a few decisions. Number one is, you have to decide, and this would happen by the Board of County Commissioners, to decide to opt in or out. You are not required to participate. You are welcome to participate. If you choose to do that, you then have to submit a budget for this new money to the State Department of Health by the end, by September 1st. So part of, I'm trying to mean by any stretch, but part of the reason that the budget hearings are on in the middle of August is to meet that deadline, so that we could basically give the Health Department the go-ahead that this budget could be submitted. It also requires that the county contribute property tax dollars to the health fund to a minimum amount that they require, and this year, that number is $58,830. Remind you, basically, last year, or this year, they have zero levy. I don't know if they've gotten $58,000 in the last four years combined, because there is a very large cash reserve in that fund, so we have moved that property tax levy to more or less the general fund. So we have moved that property tax levy to more or less the general fund. Uh, in these conversations with Stephanie, we had worked out a budget proposal, um, at the minimum amount from what, what we could get from the state. The minimum's a hundred and ninety-seven or eight thousand, some number, pretty close to that, just short of two hundred. The maximum could be upwards of quarter million dollars. And, but you were to submit the budget based upon, or support this budget from, there's two sets here. There's the fiscal budget for our side, and what the department of health wants is another component, but work together but aren't the same. You were working on the memo. Stephanie put that together, ran it past me, we did some horse trading, worked it all out, set up something to be presented next week. We, also, as I said this morning, I've assigned the levies, I've assigned that much levy to the health fund in anticipation of what we will do next Thursday. After that, Stephanie was on, had reached out to the president, board of commissioners, to be on the agenda for next, for the next Monday, to be officially opting in to this, assuming that the county council was going to be okay with the budget proposal. Because there's no reason to opt in if we're gonna deny the budget, folks. It's absolutely pointless. Money they opted in. So, a little bit ahead of the game here, uh, we still have our decision to make whether or not we choose to do it. Um, I can tell you at this point that what has been worked out with, with Stephanie, the president of the health board, uh, will result in a better part of a quarter million dollars of costs shifting from some other county fund into these health funds, or revenue from it going back into a county fund at the proposed budget that I have worked on. The EMS service will be doing a lot of the required work of this new funding. You have to meet, you have to do various different tasks to get this money and to keep getting it. You don't have to do them all, but there is a list of these core duties that are going to have to be done, and you have to do some of them, and this money is to pay for that. And Stephanie and Julie have worked out a plan to accomplish some of that, meet the requirements. I'm not gonna even con, or talk about what that plan is, because I don't understand it. But with that being said, um, there will be revenue or money from that going to fund some of that to the EMS. There will be cost shipping from EMS to health, um, and there will be, uh, a fifty-eight or nine thousand dollar levy. But for fifty-eight or nine thousand dollars, we will return back the better part of the quarter million to the general fund or, and expenses out of it.
So the question is, does county council have to officially...
No, the county council does not make, uh, make any official declaration on it. The county commissioners are the ones that had to make the decision to opt in or out, or do the official declaration.
We just have to fund the levy.
We fund, we have to fund the levy and adopt the budget.
Fund it or don't fund it, I mean, if, if we don't fund it, regardless of their passing a resolution, it becomes moot, there's no funding.
That's exactly right, and...
I wish that they would have waited a little bit before they did that, but...
Well, they didn't consult with president of the health board, they didn't consult with anybody as far as budget goes, uh, they just did it, and I'm here to tell you that if you don't know what you're opting in for that, it's not easy, folks, it's not. It is not an easy hoop to jump through, and it's a lot of money.
It's easy for them, aren't they?
It is, but then you sign up, uh, a department to do something that they're not capable of doing, it's, anyway.
But you hear more about, but you hear more about, Stephanie will be, uh, Thursday to kinda go over it. I mean, she's working hard in that department to try to make it, uh, a, a good department and a department that serves the residents of our county, and...
I might add, I think we're going to have a health department now.
Yeah.
I'd have to agree.
Pardon me?
I'd have to agree.
So I think, hear her out on, uh, Thursday morning, and I think hopefully you'll be satisfied.
Yeah, she has a very good plan.
If you're not, why, I mean, you know, you're not bound by anything that the commissioners did, they can't bind us, so, uh, you can just not fund it if you don't wanna do it.
But I do think she has a very good plan that, that I think you can be behind, I think when you talk about it, I'm not gonna steal that.
Anything else?
Just signing the minutes.
Signing the minutes, okay. Well, I can, I always worry you can do that.
One time they didn't get signed.
Oh.
You ready?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
That's right.